With us as we go through this right end of the city officials. Just help us to have solemn line and some judgment as we work for the citizens and serve. In Jesus' name we pray this all, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is sent, one nation under God, in the initial with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Yeah, I'd like to welcome everyone to this first council meeting of the year. Uh, we're moving this way in our city officials. I'm excited about that. Uh, they have served well in the past and I know that they will serve well in the future. So at this time, well, ask Judge Ruth, why don't you come forward?
All right.
Let's see, Ryan, in particular, where do you want to do this?
I'd like to put him, do the mayor first. Uh, if they hold one, then they hold two.
Okay. Now, listen closely. You want to have a show of your army?
Yes.
Robert.
Yes, sir.
All right. Well, the big guns.
I did, yes, sir.
All right, but I'll do it. I'll go through the entire of you, whether you say you will or you won't. Okay. If you will, it's good. If you won't, you got problems. Okay. All right, raise your hand if you want to.
I, John Hart, solemnly swear, I will faithfully perform my duties as mayor of the city of Centerville during my continuous office, so help me God. I do further solemnly swear in front of not the whole of the United Council of Public Money, do the state of Georgia, any political subdivision or authority thereof, that I am not the holder of any office of trust over the government of the United States or over the several states, nor over any foreign state, and I am otherwise qualified to hold said office according to the constitutions of the United States and the state of Georgia and the charter of the city of Centerville, and I will support the constitution of the United States and the state of Georgia. I do further solemnly swear that I have been a resident of Centerville for the time required by the constitution and laws of this state. I do further solemnly swear that I am a citizen of the United States and being mayor of the city of Centerville and the recipient of public funds or services rendered as such mayor, do hereby further solemnly swear in front that I will support the constitution of the United States, the constitution of Georgia, and I am not a member of the Communist Party, so help me God.
I will. Uh, I don't have a pen, so what do you? All right, mayor, feel sign right there. And then witness it. You done this?
No.
Name this though.
Can you get a speed dial?
I could save you the question. About the unit, Ryan?
Yes, sir.
Now, if you'll come down, we're going to do post one. All right. Thank you. All right. All right, okay, big breath, we're going to do this here. All right, I, Robert DeBurg, in solemn this way, that I will faithfully perform my duties as councilman in post one, of the city of Centerville during my continuous office, so help me God. I do further solemn this way in front that I am not the holder of any account for public money, do the state of Georgia, any political subdivision or authority thereof, that I am not the holder of any office of trust over the government of the United States or over either the several states or any foreign state, and I am otherwise qualified to hold said office according to the constitution of the United States and state of Georgia and the charter of the city of Centerville. And I will support the constitution of the United States and the state of Georgia. I do further solemn this way that I have been a resident of Centerville for the time required by the constitution and laws of this state. I do further solemn this way that I am a citizen of the United States and being the councilman of the city of Centerville and the recipient of public funds or services rendered as such councilman, do hereby further solemn this way and affirm that I will support the constitution of the United States and the constitution of Georgia, that I am not a member of the Communist Party, so help me God.
I will.
All right. You'll sign right there. Yes, you're over here. And they're taking all this in, right?
Of course. And then we'll transfer them to the regionals for the private court tomorrow.
There you go. All right, now, Mr. Ryan.
Congratulations.
Step with us now. Sighing at me last, they say that's right. All right, raise your hand if you want to.
I, Justin Wright, solemnly swear that I will faithfully perform my duties as councilman in post two of the city of Centerville during my continuous office, so help me God. I do further solemn this way in front that I am not the holder of any account for public money, do the state of Georgia, any political subdivision or authority thereof, that I am not the holder of any office of trust over the government of the United States or over either the several states or any foreign state, and I am otherwise qualified to hold said office according to the constitution of the United States and the state of Georgia and the charter of the city of Centerville, and I will support the constitution of the United States and the state of Georgia. I do further solemn this way that I have been a resident of Centerville for the time required by the constitution and laws of this state. I do further solemn this way that I am a citizen of the United States and being the councilman of the city of Centerville and the recipient of public funds or services rendered as such councilman, do hereby further solemn this way in front that I will support the constitution of the United States, the constitution of the state of Georgia, that I am not a member of the Communist Party, so help me God.
All right. I believe that's all the damage I can do.
Thank you, sir.
I'm going to give you very little less, so hold on.
Thank you, sir.
We all, uh, I'm going to get out of your way so you can, uh, do your thing. Thanks for you, Rob.
Thank you so much.
All right. Y'all take care.
Mayor Coach Williams, thank you so much, sir. I appreciate it. Excellent job starting us off with a new year. That's right. Okay, we got public comments here. Uh, anybody have any public comments out here? I don't hear any. And? We start with the adoption of events. Next thing, we have December seventh, twenty twenty-one, uh, council, uh, regular council meeting and December twenty-one, twenty twenty-one, council work session meetings. I entertain a motion to adopt both sets of events as written, or we'll think of separately if, so does I. So would. Second. Have a motion and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for a question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the folks, same sign. Hearing none. Both sets of events have now passed. We have no old business tonight. New business. We have the, uh, twenty twenty-two municipal court appointments. Council members, you have those, sir. Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, I, um, had an opportunity to take a look at the list of municipal appointments. Each individual has already been serving as a member of this team.
Yes, sir.
Uh, they have done a fine job and, and I believe that we approve this list and continue to have them serve. Okay, all right. Motion and second. This is municipal court judge Jeff Root, municipal court solicitor Greg H. Bell, municipal court public defender Alex Williams, municipal court judge pro temp Sherry Campbell, and municipal court judge pro temp Paul Lee. All right, have a motion and second. Any further discussion? I agree with you, they have all done an excellent job this past year since they've been on our team here in the court, and I agree with you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the folks, same sign. Hearing none. They have all more appointment out of the draw this week. All right, the appointments letters will go out this week. All right. Next item here, uh, mayor pro temp appointment, post four, Councilman Arribo. Okay, I'm going to take a motion at this point to, uh, have Councilman Arribo as our mayor pro temp for this year. So, Mr. Mayor, I move that we appoint Councilman Arribo as a man pro temp for this calendar year. Do you have a second?
Second.
Add a second. All right, I'll call for a question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the folks, same sign. Passes. Congratulations, Councilman Lee, you are a man pro temp for this year.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. All right. Item number five is police department patrol unit purchase. Councilman Evans and Chief Tompkins, please. Coming up, chief. So, so we know that, uh, you know, police vehicles, you're talking about replacing ones and kind of rotating them because you're on the radar, and, uh, so they tend to get a lot of usage and high miles, and we want to make sure that we keep our police and very capable vehicles. So, chief, go right ahead and explain what you'd like to do.
Mayor, uh, Councilman, I could throw three options, uh, as well, particularly other vehicles. Option one is a option where I would trade in three of the ground, three of the, uh, toilets and one for tires that I have, and I would like to purchase three fully equipped, uh, for explorers. The purchase price for these three explorers would be forty-seven thousand dollars per piece, and I would give you an option of forty-nine thousand dollars to, um, as a trading allowance. It would come with two thousand dollars short from the eighty-six thousand dollars that we had budgeted, but I do have some funds that's left over in the account where we have our rate vehicle, that I would, I would able to use that those funds and that I, that would be option one. Option two would be a lease program. Uh, the lease program, which I would like to give, trade in all six toilets plus the one car. Three of the toilets I want to trade in are very high mileage, and he only gave you a minimum amount for them, but the last three that I spoke about, he gave me approximately eighteen grand for each one of the vehicles, which took my, uh, total allotment, but the trading allowance was fifty-five thousand dollars. If the purchase of five explorers and one, uh, Tahoe, minus the, uh, trading allowance, it would be sixty thousand dollars per year on that lease program, for a three-year lease program, which is twenty-six thousand dollars less than what I'm allowed out of my, this line I'm budgeted for this, for this officer here. If I was given the opportunity to purchase those six vehicles, I would forego any purchase for the next two years because I would have up-to-date vehicles online, and I would have to then start trying to, uh, trade on a twenty-fifteen vehicle. On option three, it would be, it comes from Phil Brandon, it's a trade-in, but they were unable to give me a trade-in allowance amount, but did state they would sell me the vehicles for forty-two thousand dollars per, per piece. That's an unknown really because of the fact we don't know what the trading value would be. He actually came to the department, he looked at each vehicle, took the amount out to the, what equipment they had in, but he still was not able to give me a trading allowance. He stated that he wanted to get the vehicles to the dealership before any trading allowance done and was, but wanted to go in and purchase the vehicles from them. I didn't want a chance him not giving us what the vehicle worth, so I don't want to use option three. My preferred option would be option two, where we would get rid of all of the old toilets and one tire that we have, and we would report it by the fleet, we'll bring the vehicles for the next couple of years.
And so, option two is a lease option direction?
Yes, sir.
And, um, what does that save us over a purchase option?
If you purchase per, per explorers, forty-six thou, forty-seven thousand dollars per piece, that would come out to a total of a hundred and forty-three thousand ninety-four dollars, uh, we would have to pay for those three. If, uh, with the money that we have allotted, eighty-six thousand dollars, we would still save approximately twenty, twenty dollars per year as far as budget money.
Okay, so by these, they will?
Yes, if we, if this line out of state the same for the next three years, we would save that amount of money each year.
Okay. And, um, and, and the officers would have newer vehicles?
Newer the vehicles, yes, sir. Yes, sir. I right now have two vehicles that have been completely stripped, but I'm able to use, and they have just been online.
So, Mr. Mayor, I move that we, uh, go with the police chief's recommendation for option two. Okay, have a motion, have a second? Second. Have a second. I know we have some questions out here.
I do have a couple of questions, Mayor. Chief, if we were to enter into a lease agreement, who's responsible for equipping these new vehicles?
The vehicles will become fully equipped. From the, the only thing that I have to deal with, the vehicles once received is put strap on it and then go off soon.
A little, now, this is approximately all the equivalent of?
Yes, sir.
And, and what about maintenance?
All the vehicles will be under the same maintenance package warranty. The only thing that the city is responsible for is tires and oil and anything that we purchased them for.
Have we seen a lease agreement, other than they just sent the lease into us and we put ours on one? Is it pretty standard, do they have a mileage, they have a mileage limit on them?
It's only the mileage. And at the end of the purchase, at the end of the lease agreement, we pay one dollar and we own it if we want to. Or we can trade them in for a better value, better trade in value.
So, so our total cost would be what here, two-hundred-eight, two-thousand dollars?
That would be total given the purchase and outright, but we have trading allowance that, uh, we, we get, it was a bit fifty-five thousand, and if, um, if we did that, it would come up to sixty-three thousand eight ninety-three twelve per year for three years.
Is there an argument to be had with used vehicle prices higher than they have ever been in the history of the universe to sell them ourselves, rather than lean on the trading value of somebody who's going to then take them and flip them and back the money off them?
Well, with that thought, it is property on a regular personal vehicle with the wear and tear control cost, but, um, I push them towards, I feel, to be the best one I could get out of them. And the only thing that he does when he receives them is de-strap them, uh, do minimal maintenance to them and pre-set them.
Mr. Carroll, I know that you and I have had some discussions about this, this, this idea in the past, I'd love to hear your input on, I, I don't need you to give a, an opinion as to whether you're in favor of one, two, and three here, but if you could give us maybe some of the, um, pros and cons from the accounting perspective of the, the first option, the second option that the chief has, the outright purchase of three versus the leasing of six?
All right, uh, well, of course, with the outright purchase, there's no interest involved, you know, if we're going to lease, there is going to be an interest component, uh, built into that payment. Um, I know that, um, it's sixty-three thousand eight ninety-three a year, or a hundred and ninety-one thousand six hundred and nineteen dollars and approximately almost twelve thousand in due interest, you know, that would just be something I would, uh, you know, take into account. And then other, you know, at the end of three years, we would buy them, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So, um, you know, would we keep them for two more years and then?
Last, my, last five questions, are we going to want to keep them after that point? Are we going to look to just re-up the leasing?
My, my wish would be to start with the old vehicles I have on fleet then to start to get those out of the way before I start, uh, trading in those vehicles, because I have a twenty-fifteen down that's there that is, by the next three years, it'll have high mileage on it, and I would need to do it and just get rid of it.
Somebody's done a great job of forecasting the future requirements there and making sure that your recommendation fits into the requirements in future. I appreciate your thoughts on that. Anybody else have any comments or questions? Well, I think that, so at the end of three years, we have an option.
Yes, sir.
The option would be to purchase the vehicles, one dollar, and keep them in our fleet probably for another two years.
Yes.
Or the option would be to replace them with another lease.
Well, another lease, sir, or we can, we'll trade them in for outright by, it doesn't detail how we give them, like, uh.
Okay. Okay, anybody else?
All right, I mean, the difference in the money is not that significant, that's not the, the hardware that I have over it. The concern I have is just that you just have a lot more flexibility in buying the vehicle versus being, you know, tied to an agreement with, you know, what we call a lot. And if you were to decide to make a change, if you were to decide that you, that you need to do something different, make an adjustment, you're, you're, you're either all of it for it, or you're going to pay a lot of money to make any changes, so, um, you know, you got to be pretty certain that this is what we want to be for, for three, probably five years, um, you know, it hasn't been that long, we have lots of new cars, isn't it?
I think what we were doing, if I'm correct, is we were replacing older vehicles every year.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
As they were reaching their mileage.
Right.
In my mind, if you're going to be replacing vehicles, um, it doesn't make sense to buy them.
This way, we can have, we can get, uh, the vehicle on a certain year cycle with so many years, you know, this, so the vehicle's going to leave, and the next three years, whatever like that, we can, uh, another set of vehicles need to go in and be trading at the time, that way we won't have those cars sitting on a lot, I'm not able to do anything with them.
And that's pretty much why, sir. That's why I'm in favor of, of proceeding. And then I, I think you already mentioned that at the end of three years, if we don't like the way that it worked, we could just buy the vehicles and, and go back to purchasing them.
I do have one other question, chief. When your proposal's here, our proposal number two from Brandon, which is one of the, we like, right, is that they, they did give some trade-in evaluations down there, list them going down the middle there. And then on this last sheet that you gave us, there was a different option from Brandon, where I guess we would just be buying, buying some stuff outright. The, or the, I guess a lease agreement, but from a, from a different, uh, just in different terms.
What's the, um, lease, the three-year lease, the total, the one you're looking at?
I, I have two, I have two here that are, that are from Brandon, and they're dated the same date, but the values on the trade-ins are different on some of the same vehicles.
Yes, today I called back and tried to get more of trading, and he did allow me, uh, extra six-dollar miles on trade.
So which one, so, so the one that we have that's in blue is the correct, or the one we should be looking at?
The one that says the, uh?
The one that's like this, that's in black?
My, uh, color.
This, uh, my only color.
Yeah, which, which one are we supposed to be looking at?
The one that has a three-year lease at the bottom that says six-three-eight-nine-three.
Okay, I got you. So that reflects the reduction that you're talking about, that makes sense. So this one, this one that is listed as number two is sort of outdated. I got you, okay. I was looking at the whole one. Those one is a high trade-in.
Good thing you called. I think you, I see the other guy. Good job. I heard you want a phone call to bring in, huh? Something I had to get?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll, that's sixty-three thousand eight hundred and ninety-three dollars and twelve cents workout, uh, now budgeted?
We currently have budgeted, uh, forty-six thousand one hundred in the general fund budget for the purchase, and then fifty thousand in spots for this year.
So we can do this?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm looking at this paperwork here, and he's got, he's got a number for a three-year lease and a five-year lease. Is that just an option that we have, or is he, is, is that, is that the option, we buy them back for a dollar, or is that just two separate options that he has?
It's an option, if we want to pick over three years, we can, we want to switch out to five or ten.
Do we plan on keeping these vehicles for less than three years?
I don't plan on, sir.
You were saying we keep for five, you know, keep at least two more years after this?
I want to be able to purchase them, I didn't want to keep them under lease for five years.
I got you, I got you. So after, and at this rate, at, at the sixty-three thousand dollar a year rate, we can purchase them for a dollar after the?
Yes, sir.
I understand. Yeah. What, I know you said you wrote the, the lease agreement, I apologize if I haven't seen it, but I've, I've been, we've been under the weather last week, so I'm a little behind a little.
Several years ago, um, when Clint Brandon was still alive, and I came to work for the city, we were leasing vehicles, and I went down and met with him and looked over the vehicles, and there was language needed to add to the lease that actually made it legal for you all to lease vehicles. And he and I worked together, and he revised his lease, and that's now his standard lease, and it hasn't changed.
So in terms of that lease, what happens if the record?
Our insurance.
Insurance. You just replace it and roll it over?
That's what I said, end damage done by the city, we would have to do it, I'm sure.
This, um, they've been good about if we had to do something with a car before the lease ended on working with us, and that's rarely happened, but it has happened a few times, but we do insure the cars.
Any further comments from anybody?
The plan is keep them to five, just, the plan is to purchase them and then keep them for that full five years, I think the, the money works on that one.
Oh, good question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the folks, same sign. Option number two, thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. You have very impressed with, we went through this. Very impressed. Okay, now we're down to topics from the council, post one, please.
I hope everyone had a happy new year, New Year's Day, and, um, I look forward to being around for the next four years at least to, uh, to work with y'all and, uh, work with the rest of the, the city employees and the citizens outside of town.
Thank you. Post two.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, it's, it's been a great opportunity to serve the last four years, and I look forward to continuing to, to do the next four. We've done some, some good things in the last four years, and I'm looking forward to see us build on it and, and go forward, so I'm excited for what's next for serving. So, thank you for, uh, everybody for the opportunity to, uh, continue to serve, thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Post three. Yes, sir, I want to say a happy new year to all of our employees and all of our citizens. It's exciting, uh, the things that we have coming up for the new year, and I'm looking forward to continuing to serve also, uh, and to work with these, uh, gentlemen and with our city employees to provide services to our citizens. Okay, thank you. Post four, please.
Ryan, I'd like to say, um, welcome to Mayor Harley's family for coming, it's a very special occasion. I think it's kind of nice to see y'all every once in a while come in and cheer dad on and grandpa, right? And so it's really good, it's nice to see them. I want to congratulate Mayor Harley, Councilman Burke, Councilman Wright, on, uh, being sworn in, and we're looking forward to working together as a, as a, uh, mayor and council team, uh, to improve Centerville and continue making, uh, changes and supporting our staff and, and all of our department heads. Wanted to make a special note to our, uh, police department during the holidays, made some significant stops here in Centerville, uh, picking up people who are doing a lot of bad things with drugs and money and guns and all that stuff, and so kudos to the police department and all the hard work, certainly to the fire department for the, for New Year's celebrations everywhere and fireworks flying off all over the place and, uh, same, same thing on Mr. Broomfield, and his guys, all the hard work they do out there to keep all of our product works working and making sure everything's going well, as well as support and, um, our budget, keeping us all straight on, uh, what we're doing, and, and of course, thanking for all your hard work and helping us do everything that we do. And we can't go without, um, without the help of our front offices as well, right? And they're always there helping us, making sure that we're doing all the things that we should be doing. I'm still looking for more mail, right? So, I mentioned that, I mentioned that today, so I told him, said, you know, we can cover you, and you got nothing in your mailbox, you're wondering, hmm. So, I. Well, I'm not, I'm not the only one that thinks that, so I just thought to try a little bit more outspoken. Anyways, happy new year to everybody and again, thanks to your family for coming out of town. That's all I have there.
Well, thank you very much. You did get a, uh, unusual letter about three weeks ago, did you?
Yeah, I did, thank you.
No, they, they all acted right, everything they're saying. Uh, I'm so proud of our city, you, uh, Sarah, uh, city court down there, just, you guys are just wonderful. You made it through this whole year, or two years really, having to deal with this COVID thing, and, uh, we all appreciate that very, very much. I mean, that's, uh, just a wonderful thing. Mike, uh, Broomfield, you and your guys out there, I know you don't have all the people you need, we need more people, everybody's listening to this, we need more people. you need, the D-Bo people, especially this, the D-Bo people, please come up, up here and we give you a job. But you guys have done outstanding job, and you're getting the last of declarations down today, I believe, this? You know, for the Christmas decorations, so.
Wouldn't you know, that tree fell in the river on the way back. We don't have a river, but that tree fell on the way back up here to the city. Shame, shame, shame.
Yeah, I guess. Fire department, of course, hey, you, with, uh, Chief Joe there, one job all year long, the things for, all, all the fire efforts you made out there. We've been lucky, we've had rain on it all quite a bit this last season here, and that's helped us out some, I'm sure, you know, but you guys on, on top of it, and we appreciate you, you make us very proud, don't you? Chief Tony, you guys are just out there everywhere, and I love being able to see them. I can remember times in the past where you barely ever see anybody to see them like, but now we see them all the time, we see them all over the place, and that makes a big difference in there. And, uh, of course, you've been with us for the year now, but you've done, you've really done a remarkable job over there, and we all appreciate you very much for doing that. We really do. And Chris over there, you know, is, uh, she and her, her team has done a wonderful job in there, keeping us going. They've been here all throughout this pandemic, they've always been people in that office working. We haven't had any problems, any breakdowns or anything, so, yeah, they make us very proud too. And, uh, Mr. Tidy's here, you know, always saying, I get through saying something, now if Mr. Tidy was to tell everybody what I really said. That's how much I depend on him, and all of us depend on him that much, just, we appreciate you that so much, we really do. The council members up here have been great to work with, this last year in particular, uh, we've made it through the pandemic again, I know it started back up again. I just saw the results of what's in the hospital, uh, as of this morning, and it's been a big raise in the last week, big raise. So be careful out there. They say this COVID nineteen variant is not as bad as the other, but they're also saying there are a lot more children to be, a lot more children. I, I was reading, I listened today, and I think they're saying that average about several hundred children per day are now going to the hospital for it, in the hospital. You know, most of them are not though, you know, the large number of them are just like sniffles or something else, and they get over them, but it's still a dangerous thing. But I appreciate all the councils on this year, we, we work together, and you know that we don't always agree on everything, but that's right, because we need to get everybody's gears on, because we represent the city of Centerville. And, um, not everybody in the city of Centerville agrees with everything, so we should be the same way, we should represent the city, uh, residents that way, you know, really think? And my family, thank you all so much for coming here this evening, my wife Shirley, my son John, my daughter Kim, uh, my husband Chad out there, and my two grandsons over here, you know, late in, uh, Max, and then Daddy Jess, thank y'all so much for being here, it means a lot to be to have you here, it really does mean a lot, I appreciate y'all very much. And last thing we'll talk about is that, I think we're gonna lose Miss Kendra back there in the corner. Yeah, she's got another job, or something else. I know. And we sure gonna miss you. We really gonna miss you. Yeah. And, uh, yeah, we'll let you know how much we appreciate you. A big part of our family, we've led almost two years now. We wish you good luck in the future. Thank you so much for everything. All right, I don't have anything else. Uh, let's go home.